Good morning, everybody. We welcome you to the Harden County Courthouse and to Commissioner's Court. Today is Monday, April the nineteenth. It's ten o'clock in the morning, and it's time to begin court meeting will come to order. Is Pastor Frank Aragon here?
No.
Commissioner Cooper, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Yes, sir. Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of this county. Ask you to help us make the right decisions concerning our citizens. We ask you, Lord, to be with our men and women in uniform, both at home and abroad. We ask these things in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Ms. Gore?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Item number four, Glenda Austin, County Clerk, approval of minutes of prior meetings. Glenda?
That would be the special meeting on March the twenty-third, a regular meeting on March the twenty-third, and a special meeting on March the thirtieth.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkandall. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, presentation approval of cash statement. Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning. In our general checking account, we have nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents. In our Texpool general account, we have twelve million, one hundred thirty thousand, twenty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents for a total of cash funds of thirteen million, one hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred one dollars and fifty-six cents. Our Texpool rate today is zero point zero five three seven percent.
All right.
Move accept treasurer's. A second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, Angela Gore, County Auditor, payment of county bills.
You're going to give me number six?
Yep, I'm sorry. Number six, Deborah McWilliams, presentation approval of registered claims to be canceled by court. So move. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you.
Now, item number seven, Angela Gore, County Auditor, payment of county bills.
The pre-approved expenditures for March the twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh were one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-two cents. The pre-approved expenditures for March the thirty-first through April the first, two thousand fifteen, were thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and one cent. Pre-approved expenditures for April the seventh, two thousand fifteen, were thirty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. And today, April the thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, the expenditures for Commissioner's Court are two hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and ninety-four cents. The total expenditures are four hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Gross payroll for April the second, two thousand fifteen, was four hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. FICA was twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents. Retirement was fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents. The total transfer for April the second, two thousand fifteen payroll was four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-one cents.
Move we pay county bills. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkandall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, Angela Gore, discussion and action regarding fiscal year two thousand fourteen surplus carryover of funds for all Roden Bridge precincts.
Okay, for the Fund Seventeen, the Roden Bridge, the prior year surplus carryover amounts for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, are Roden Bridge One, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Roden Bridge Two, two hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Roden Bridge Three, four hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. And Roden Bridge Four, thirty-nine thousand and fifty-one dollars. And at this time, we would like to get the court to discuss or act upon taking this carryover amount from the fiscal year September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, out of their contingency and putting it into their current budget for two thousand fifteen sixteen year.
Without me putting a pen to it, can you give me a total?
I'm sorry, for two thousand fourteen fifteen fiscal year. The total is one million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars.
We approve transfer and carryover. Second.
I got discussion.
Okay.
We are, let me get this correct first. We are just authorizing this as a, as a total amount per carryover. This is not discussion on what to do with these funds?
As I understand, it'll just be carried over, those amounts will be carried over in each Roden Bridge precinct the way it was presented by the auditor.
I thought we had already done that.
No, we had to wait until the outside audit was complete, so we had those amounts certified, which that has been done. So that's why it's on the court at this time. On the agenda.
I don't have anything else.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkandall. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, Dana Hall, District Clerk, introduction of new Deputy Clerk Jan Stewart. Good morning, Ms. Hall, how are you?
Good morning. Fine. This is Jan Stewart, and she's been working with us for almost eleven?
Eleven days.
Eleven days. She brings a lot of experience to the table, so we've put her to work, and she's made eleven days. So far, so good. We're glad to have her.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Item number ten, Commissioner Roberts, introduction of new heavy equipment operator Norby Clemmons.
What, Norm? This is Norby Clemmons. He's new to us as of today. Starts, started this morning. He comes to us with lots of experience in heavy equipment operations. He's been traveling, and he decided he just wanted a job that was localized where he didn't have to move around a lot. Plus, I think he's in the process of getting married somewhere along the lines. Settle down. This is Norby, and we're glad to have him aboard with all this experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Item number eleven, Isaac Garcia with Texas Association of Counties Risk Control Consultant, presentation of safety award. Isaac?
Good morning, sir, how are you? Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This year I have the, today I have the two thousand fourteen safety award for the Texas Association of Counties for Harden County. Safety award, one of the major things with the safety award and one of our criteria is that the county maintains a low loss ratio. Just one piece of the criteria. Even though it's one piece of the criteria, it's something that takes a lot of effort on all parts, whether it be the Commissioners, whether it be HR, whether it be your employees, it's a countywide effort. And I just wanted to help recognize the county in maintaining that low loss ratio and achieving the safety award this year. Would somebody like to accept the award?
I will.
Yes, sir. I guess I better get up.
It's all this new stuff. Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Item number twelve, Elaine Schulenberger, Director of Nutrition and Services for Seniors, adoption of Resolution seven dash fifteen, recognizing the month of May, two thousand fifteen, as Older Americans Month. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Do you have a copy of the resolution?
I don't.
Would you like one?
Yes, I would. Well, thank you so much, Judge and Commissioners, for allowing me to be here today. I'm so excited to tell you a little bit about what we do. But first of all, I'd like to say thank you for all your years of support of our program. Without your support, many seniors and disabled in Harden County would not need the services they need, would not have the services they need in order to remain at home. We can serve a home-delivered meal to our seniors for about fifteen hundred dollars a year. That's about the same cost as someone to go to the hospital for one day or to go to a nursing home for three days. So it's a win-win situation for us to be able to serve our seniors. And in order, of course, to continue to do the things that we do, we need to raise money. Every year, we serve over four hundred and twenty thousand meals to seniors throughout Harden and Jefferson County. And again, this allows seniors to remain independent, and if you know any seniors, that's exactly what they want to do. They want to be independent in their own home and take care of themselves. All of our services are a contribution base, so they feel like they're contributing to the care that they get. Not only do we provide the meals, but we also provide transportation. You might see our buses driving back and forth every day, Monday through Friday, and sometimes on Saturday, taking people to life-sustaining appointments such as dialysis, grocery shopping, and doctor's appointments. And without this transportation, they couldn't get to those services. So we're having our Deliver the Difference luncheon, and that's what you do for us when you contribute to our program. You deliver the difference. And this is to celebrate our contributions to our seniors. And this year, we have some wonderful honorees, and I have two of them with me today, Marie Broussard and Charlene Cook. And you might know another of our honoree is Pete Shelton. So we're going to honor these special people because they have contributed so much to our community, and we consider our community treasures. So we want to invite everyone to be there on May the seventh. It's a luncheon at the Event Center, and I have some invitations that I'll leave right here. And I just would like to say thank you again for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move with adopt Resolution seven dash fifteen.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkandall and a second by Commissioner Cooper to adopt Resolution number seven dash fifteen. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Ms. Schulenberger. Item number thirteen, Tyrone McKenzie and Stephanie Pearson with Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission for adoption and resolution of number eight dash fifteen, recognizing April seventh, two thousand fifteen, as National Service Recognition Day. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
County Day of Recognition for National Service, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's counties are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet county needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participant addresses the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the twenty-first century and supporting veterans and military families to provide health services and helping communities recover from national disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. Whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations that serve both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to serve, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with our county executives nationwide to encourage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities. And in joining with the National Association of Counties and county executives across the country for the County Day of Recognition for National Service on April seventh, two thousand fifteen. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioner's Court of Harden County, Texas, does hereby proclaim April seventh, two thousand fifteen, as National Service Recognition Day in Harden County and encourages residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our county. So to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Thank y'all very much. I think she made you read more than she had to read.
Uh-huh. She did. She did. And we, everyone knows Jared, he is a member of our advisory council.
I told him if they wanted y'all to take this resolution serious, not to bring me up here. I gave him a fair warning. I move we adopt Resolution number eight dash one five.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts to adopt Resolution number eight dash fifteen. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all again.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Item number fourteen, Commissioner Kirkandall, adoption of Resolution number nine dash one five, recognizing the month of April, two thousand fifteen, as Fair Housing Month.
Would you like to read it for the court, please?
Yes, sir.
Whereas the National Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas the forty-seventh anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success and the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioner's Court of Harden County, Texas, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month in Harden County and does hereby urge all citizens to become aware of and support the fair housing law.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Move adoption Resolution nine dash fifteen.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts to adopt Resolution number nine dash fifteen. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again.
Yes, sir.
Item number fifteen, Nancy Neal with American Cancer Society, Harden and South Jasper County Relay for Life, adoption of Resolution number ten dash fifteen, designating the week of April twentieth through twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, as Relay for Life Week in Harden County. Good morning, Nancy, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I want to thank you, we all do. I'd like the ladies on the back row to please stand up. These are some of our awesome volunteers and relayers. The lady on, in the black right there, that is actually an American Cancer Society, that, she is our staff partner, Rhonda Brown. She leads us in the direction we need to, we need to go and keeps us on our mission. We are really excited again this year to have our relay back in Coontz. We'll be at Coontz High School, April the twenty-fourth, from six PM to six midnight, I mean midnight, not six midnight, six AM to midnight. And we would love for all y'all to come out, help us celebrate and remember and fight back because one day, we will find a cure for cancer, one step at a time. And we do appreciate the Commissioner's support and the Judge's support, and our newly-elected county judge has agreed if possible, he's going to come out and read this great proclamation and start our relay off. So I encourage each of you again to come out and help us because the funds we raise do matter, and it goes towards research, and without those funds, research is moot. So we thank you, and I do have a little gift for y'all, if y'all don't mind.
Okay.
From all of y'all, just to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. And here you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we would like to see all of y'all out, April twenty-fourth, Friday, Coontz High School Stadium. Come help us in our light.
Not that any of the other resolutions are not important, but I would imagine that everybody in here can say that cancer has probably touched them or somebody in their family in some way or another, so this is a very important cause, and we appreciate y'all very much for that.
We appreciate y'all, thank you.
I move that we adopt Resolution number ten dash fifteen.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkandall and a second by Commissioner Roberts to adopt Resolution number ten dash fifteen. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Nancy. Item number sixteen, Lisa Hutchinson, Confederation of Clubs and Independence, adoption of Resolution number eleven dash fifteen, recognizing the month of May, two thousand fifteen, as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Ms. Hutchinson?
Well, Ms. Lisa couldn't make it, but on her behalf, I would like to thank Harden County for doing their part and participating in National Safety and Awareness Month for motorcycles. It's very important that everyone try to do their part, the little things, just watching for motorcycles, giving us a little extra room, using your signals to, so that we're aware of your intentions, giving us the right-of-way in sometimes when it looks like you have an opening to go. All these things can actually assist and contribute to preventing motorcycle accidents and more importantly, more motorcycle fatalities. Normally, May is designated as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month because that's when the weather starts clearing up and it starts getting pretty, and you see more motorcycles out on the road. Southeast Texas, we're there. April has come around, the rains have moved off, we're out there. So everything that we can do by doing these proclamations, we have a Safety and Awareness Ride through all of the counties in May, we're just trying to bring awareness to the citizens. And so by y'all doing this proclamation or this resolution for this, we sure appreciate your participation. The resolution reads, whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our county, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than other motorists. And whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorcyclists alike, motorists alike, on motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through the comprehensive approach to motorcycling safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all those who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicles traveling the highways of this country. And whereas urging all our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioner's Court of Harden County, Texas, does hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand fifteen, as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Harden County, Texas, and urges all citizens to remain aware of motorcyclists and afford them the same courtesies that they deserve while utilizing Texas highways.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Move we adopt Resolution number eleven dash fifteen.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkandall and a second by Commissioner Roberts to adopt Resolution number eleven dash fifteen. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you to the court.
Yes, ma'am. Item number seventeen, Shirley Stevens, Tax Assessor Collector, discussion and action regarding refund of the conservative, to the Conservation Fund. Good morning.
Okay, the Frisell District had this account double assessed. They have discovered the error, and they have deleted this account. However, it is in excess of the five hundred dollar limit. Therefore, I need the approval from the court to refund the Conservation Fund.
Is this that piece of property over to Silvy, the baby guy, that's the piece that they bought?
Uh, no, sir. This is a house, outbuildings, but it's not that particular piece of property, no, sir.
I move that we authorize the refund.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkandall. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Item number eighteen, Deborah McWilliams, authorization for county judge to sign two-year depository pledge agreement and county depository contract with Wells Fargo's Bank and establish new bank account named Harden County Investment Account. Good morning again, Debbie.
Good morning. We had, as a committee, we had decided that we would do a two-year depository contract. This is just getting the information together to give the judge the authority to sign that. On the pledge agreement, Rebecca reviewed it on Friday, had a couple of suggestions that she wanted Wells Fargo to consider making. We're in the process right now of them looking at those changes and having their attorney review it. As soon as we get that complete, the pledge agreement will be ready. Also, in changing banks, we're going to establish a new bank account called Harden County Investment Account to keep the excess funds that will be moving from Texpool over to Wells Fargo so that it can be separate and be easier to keep up with like that.
So are we doing that now?
That's what I'm asking permission for today. We're starting the process with Wells Fargo as soon as everything's in place to establish our new accounts.
Okay, so we're talking about moving the excess to, go ahead and putting it at Wells Fargo?
Yes, sir, all except the three and a half million that we had talked about leaving in Texpool.
So we're leaving that in Texpool?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
With the three and a half million in Texpool, all the rest will move over to this account with Wells Fargo.
Three and a half million in Texpool, is that considered our contingency?
It's not, we didn't go by contingency. As a committee, we discussed that if we had two, I think, two months' operating monies in a separate account, we looked at it more as like not putting all of our eggs in one basket. If something, heaven forbid, happened over here, we have this money over here to be able to operate, be able to get our hands on to operate with. And then, of course, you know, all of our money has collateral, it's all has pledged securities. But it would just be a little time turnaround to, to be able to.
With that in mind, and I think this question probably would go with this line item, but maybe it should have been asked when you presented the financials. We're always talking about the amount of money we have in contingency for, lack of other words, rainy day fund in case we do have a problem. You give a statement today that said we had thirteen million. If we had an emergency tomorrow, do we have thirteen million dollars to work with?
We have thirteen million in cash. That's our, that's our cash money.
Yeah.
That, that's our, our general checking account, and then our Texpool. That, that's those two accounts.
Everything combined.
That, yeah, those. Now, there are other accounts that I handle that's not in that total. You know, there's other monies like adult probation juvenile, all these other bank accounts that we have, but that's just strictly the general checking money. And then the excess, I move into Texpool to just keep it separate. Like I said, don't keep all your eggs in one basket.
And Wells Fargo, in the long run, they're, they're offering to double our interest rate than what Texpool is.
Right. But we, yes, they're offering to, to have a higher interest rate, but then too, those funds will offset the cost and fees associated with all of our bank accounts.
Which is a great idea.
Yes.
Yeah.
Instead of, they're going to assess that once a year, and it'll be depending on our balance, on our average balance through the year. So we're going to have to move some money over there to, to keep from having all those fees. But also, they've offered a little bit higher interest rate.
It's nearly doubled.
But the committee, some of the committee felt a little concerned about moving all of our money to Wells Fargo. And, and we'll try it this way until, you know, we decide everything's okay. And we're just being a little proactive, I think, a little cautious.
But everything put with Wells Fargo has to have a hundred percent collateral, because that's state law right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You did a great job on walking us through that committee, Debbie, so I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank y'all for helping me. But today, I just need authorization for the judge to sign the contract and the pledge security agreement and opening this new account.
I move that we authorize county judge to sign two-year depository pledge agreement and county depository contract with Wells Fargo and establish new bank account named Harden County Investment Account.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkandall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number nineteen, Deborah McWilliams, authorization to close the following bank accounts. Emergency Family Services, account number ending in nine zero zero five. CJD, account ending in number, account ending in number nine zero, nine one one zero, excuse me. The Little Light Fund, account number ending in seven zero zero six. Harden County Explorer Post, account number ending in nine zero two seven. And Harden County Sheriff's Office, account number ending in number one eight eight eight.
So move.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
This'll just clean up our bank accounts a little bit now that there are going to be fees assessed on all the individual accounts. We're trying to restructure and regroup, and that's what this'll do. We're trying to restructure and regroup, and that's what this'll do. Also, on the back of that, I gave you a copy of the letter that the sheriff is gonna use on the next item on the court.
Okay, thank you. Item number twenty, Ed Kane, Sheriff, authorization to transfer funds from Hardin County Explorer Post Fund to Sheriff's Office Budget. Line item number zero one zero dash five six zero dash three nine two for uniforms. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. The one account that she said ending of Explorer Post, ending in nine zero two seven, those monies, I'm asking the court to allow us to put into a line item, uh, uniform line item, uh, zero one zero dash five six zero dash three nine two in the sher- in the Sheriff's Office Budget.
Make that motion. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-one, Ed Kane, presentation of quarterly crime statistics report.
This is the activity summary, and did y'all have a copy of this? I'll get you one.
Okay.
This is activities, activity summary from the beginning of the year through March. We had a total of nine hundred and seventy-nine offenses, seven hundred and sixty-eight total incidences, filed, uh, six hundred and ninety-two charges, made three hundred and ninety-four arrests. There were twenty-four total violations, traffic and, and Class C-type violations where we wrote twenty citations. There were cr- uh, total of crim- five hundred and twenty-five criminal papers, we served one hundred and fifty-three of those to this date, and there were three hundred and eighty-two civil papers, which two hundred and seventy-five of those have been served. We also registered fifty-six offenders in those three months. Sex offenders, six offenders, so.
And this is for January through March?
Yes, sir.
I think those are great numbers, but if you look back and compare it with when three members of this court was in your department, they were a lot higher.
That's an honest statement or just a facetious?
That is a facetious statement. Thank you, Sheriff.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two, Tom Callaway, concerned citizen, discussion regarding traffic and speeding of vehicles and, and concerns of possible railroad switch station on Cooks Lake Road in Lumberton Precinct Four. Mr. Callaway? I guess Mr. Callaway's with us, so we'll move on to item number twenty-three, unless Commissioner, do you have anything you'd like to address on?
Yes, he, he called me.
Okay.
And, uh, we talked and we discussed it, and he said that he, he was satisfied with what I had to say, and that's why he's not here.
Don't we need the table or just hope?
There's no action.
He's satisfied, we'll just move on. Item number twenty-three, discussion and possible action regarding proposal by Dale Williford with Hardin County Aircraft Storage LLC to enter into a lease agreement for fourteen thousand thirty-six square feet of land at Hawthorne Field for the purpose of leasing hangar and, and office space. Good morning, Dale.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Judge.
Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate the opportunity to be here. Uh, this is a project I've been work- trying to work toward for several years. And, uh, October, nearly five years ago, uh, the court was gracious enough to award the FBO contract to me to, uh, operate the FBO of Hawthorne Field for the county. And I've worked with the court and members of county government to try to do as efficient operations we can out there since that time. Uh, worked real hard to, uh, first of all, we established a flight school and we trained pilots to, to fly, and have, uh, uh, Gene Bumstead here with me this morning, he's our chief instructor, and we've, uh, had several licenses, uh, approved for new private pilots and instrument pilots and a couple of commercial pilots in that period of time. We're, we're real proud of that re- that record. Uh, one of the things that I was told at the time that needed, uh, that Hawthorne Field needed was some more hangars. Didn't take me long to figure out that was true. During the period of time I've been there, we've worked, uh, real hard, uh, me and the people that work with me and work for me, to establish a, uh, a welcome atmosphere at the airport for general aviation and for the public, and to promote goodwill on behalf of the county, and of course, our business. I think we've been successful at that. Okay, I have a picture before you there that shows an awful lot of, uh, satellite photos, there's an awful lot of airplanes tied down outside at Hawthorne Field. That's not the most advantageous way to store an aircraft. Uh, there's, uh, developed in that period of time quite an interest in hangars. When I started, there was a, there was a reluctance on the part of county government, I think, to, to add hangars, uh, because there'd been some, uh, hangars that were in ill repair, and during one of our latest hurricanes, Hurricane Ike, I think it was, they were destroyed and, uh, actually participated in doing damage to other people's property that was out there. And that was a serious concern, well justified. We, like I say, we've tried to create a good atmosphere out there, and, uh, I think we're ready to build hangars at the airport. County funding, uh, even though y'all show those great cash balances, I understand that county has great obligations to do with things, and I've also discussed with, with members of the court, past and present, that, uh, that there's not a great, great interest, I don't think, in the county proceeding with, with building hangars because of the investment that would require and such as that. I've developed a plan for my business for me to invest and build a, uh, at least one, one hangar with an option to build another that would hold ten aircraft at the onsite, which would require the county to lease me some land and, uh, make that available so we could proceed to do that, provide folks that are there now an opportunity to, to have a place to store their aircraft inside and hopefully attract some other people that aren't there now that would come there and store their aircraft inside if that kind of storage was available. And, uh, interested in working with the court to achieve that goal.
Now, the fourteen thousand thirty-six square feet, is that for the one hangar that you talked about?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and that's an approximate, we would modify that with an as-built, uh, uh, however the, the final dimensions of the hangar work out, uh, as-built at, after completion of construction.
And can you show us on the, uh, diagram that you have about where that will go?
I can't. Uh, partially, it's the big white building there, and the, the G on the Google map, uh, designation. It'd be right close to the G on the Google map, Google Earth designation there, behind the main hangar.
Okay.
Uh, the, basically south of the county-owned hangar that's there now.
Okay. And as I understand it, you would need a, uh, you would need the county to provide a, uh, short roadway, uh, coming out of that hangar to the, uh, existing roadways.
Yes, I'm, I'm asking for the, uh, the county to help with that portion of it, the pavement that would leave the hangar area, uh, to the current taxiway.
Okay.
Judge, I've had an opportunity, uh, the airport is in my precinct, so I spend a little bit of time out there, and I've had the opportunity to sit with Mr. Williford, uh, on a couple of occasions and go over this agreement. I had some reservation and questions that Mr. Williford was able to, uh, answer for me, and some of the other members of the court might have questions, but, one thing that I did not see in his contract, and he confirmed it, that if someone else wanted to do the same thing out there, that his contract does not prohibit that.
No, it's just not, not asked for anything?
I've met, I've met with, uh, at least one other individual that's, uh, interested in building a hangar out there, and I would want it to be known for the record and for the public that if that individual wants to pursue that, we're definitely gonna look into the same things that we're providing for Mr., Mr. Williford. I think the difference between Mr. Williford and anyone else that might be interested in putting a hangar out there, Mr. Williford's doing this for a business, as well as, uh, he might have his personal planes in it, I don't know, and the other options for the other citizens that would be interested is just for their personal planes. Like I said, I had, uh, questions and reservations initially, after I looked at this, I'm, I'm satisfied with this contract. I don't know how the other members of the court do, but I would like to ask, is there anybody in the audience that has anything they'd like to say on this matter? Anybody interested in questioning? Yes, sir.
Yes, I am.
Good morning, Dale.
Morning.
My name is Curtis Spears. Uh, I operate Heritage Helicopter Services out of Beaumont, Texas. We're a helicopter charter operation. I live in Sillsburg. I do drive to Beaumont on a daily basis, uh, because, uh, as Mr. Williford has said, there's, uh, Hardin County, uh, wasn't equipped, uh, for me to operate my business out of Hawthorne Field. It makes a lot more sense for me to operate out of, out of Hawthorne Field. I do look forward, hope the, uh, court, uh, can, can see the value in this. I operate, uh, six aircraft out of there on a, on a full-time basis. Not today because of the rain, but, uh, would have been interested in, in Hawthorne Field, uh, for quite, quite a bit of time to, to run a business operation out of there. We also operate a helicopter training facility, have been operating that since, uh, two thousand and nine. And, uh, very interested in, in these proceedings and, uh, happy to hear that, uh, that this, uh, that this is finally being heard. And Heritage Helicopter Services is, uh, interested in both moving our operation and, uh, flight training, uh, facility to, to Hawthorne as this, uh, as this unfolds. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think the judge also has, uh, several names that, uh, that he, he has met where they're interested in hangars. And I would just say that the people that have come to my office, I will get in contact with and let them know, uh, once the court makes a decision what we're gonna do, that, we can move on from here, if they're interested in, in wrecking hangars out there, then we'll go from there. I don't have anything else, Judge, if any of the other members might.
Uh, Passon County.
Can I add one thing?
Look at this contract.
Yes, sir, she's looking at, I just want to say that as I, that it's processed first with y'all, and we'll have to modify the master plan at the airport and submit it to the state. Then the state, uh, a- application for the building construction has to be made with, with Texas DOT as they represent FAA interest in, uh, in Texas. And then, uh, as I learned that process, I'm vaguely familiar with it now, and when I learn it and become more proficient with it, anybody that wants to build a private hangar out there, I'll be happy to, uh, give whatever expertise that I have learned in that process to them to assist them.
Are you going to furnish us with some type of master plan since you are the fixed base operator? That the next one that wants to lease a spot, how these things would be laid out?
I'll be happy to work.
So the county has an obli- has an obligation to do some runway work or tying into runway that we'll know where we're going on?
I'd be happy to work with the court to, to achieve that goal.
I think we need to do that since there does seem to be some interest in other people.
And I'm glad to see that interest has changed because Hawthorne Field was not that active, and there wasn't that interest four years ago. And I'm proud to see that interest, and I'm proud to see gentlemen in the court this morning that are interested in this.
Yeah, we are too.
It's exciting.
Court is, yes.
For me.
Dale, I, I had an opportunity to attend an open house out there, and I appreciate the good job you've done out there and the number of pilots that were there that day, and I know my family had a great time, so I appreciate you stewarding that thing very well.
We try to do that every year, we've got a good active EAA chapter. Our president, Mr. Wilson, is here this morning, and, uh, that's experimental aircraft, uh, and, uh, they're very active. They are mostly responsible for that, I help them, I, I work with them on that, but without their help and the manpower that they bring to the table, we, we couldn't get that done. So, uh, the aviation community in Hardin County is a, uh, a, a family of, of folks, and, uh, I've made quite honestly some new friends since I've been out there that'll be lifelong friends if I never walk back in the airport again. But it, that, I'm, I'm really fortunate to have, be blessed with some good friends out there.
All right, any other discussion? What's the pleasure of the court?
So you're gonna put together a master plan and then present it?
It'll have to be probably approved with y'all before it's submitted to the FAA, so yes, sir. I'll work with Amanda and we'll get a, a master plan together.
Do, do you have a timeframe you'd like to get that in?
Tell me, I would, I would say within, hopefully, a couple of weeks.
I move approve this lease to Hardin County Aircraft Storage LLC and authorize the judge to sign it.
And I would just like, if you wouldn't mind amending that to stay at, uh, upon the county attorney's approval of the lease.
So done.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Feld and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate the confidence you're showing in what we're trying to do out there. Appreciate these gentlemen being here this morning, and, uh, I appreciate their patience with me, they've had to be very patient as this was a, a big endeavor for me and my company, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Is Rose still here? Okay. Number twenty-four, Rose Stewart, Human, Human Resources Director, permission for county judge to sign Affordable Care Act Reporting Tracking System, otherwise known as ARCS, program agreement offered by Texas Association of Counties Health and Employees Benefit Pool.
So move.
Thank you.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any other discussion?
Does she have a speech? Okay, she seems satisfied.
Mr. Cooper, did you have discussion?
No, Mr. Feld wanted a speech by Rose, yeah. Anything to do with Affordable Care Act, I oppose, but what, what's your recommendation on this?
Well, we have to do the reporting and Texas Association of Counties offering that service to do us for, uh, no cost, free of, free of charge, and yes, I highly recommend it.
Thank you.
Nothing else, Judge?
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Item number twenty-five, authorization for county judge to sign request for unclaimed capital credits received from electric cooperatives for two thousand and fourteen.
Make that motion.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-six, authorization for county judge to sign Title IV E Child Welfare Services Contract Number two three nine three eight nine nine and Title IV E Legal Services Contract Number two four one one eight four five zero with Texas Department of Family and Protective Services and Child Protective Services to receive reimbursement for a percentage of allowable expenses related to serving the children of Hardin County.
So move.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-seven, Jackie Ellis, purchasing agent, information regarding results from sale of nineteen seventy-eight Ferguson Roller, serial number ending in S nine one five, a nineteen ninety-five Ford truck, VIN number ending in six nine two eight, and a tandem haul trailer with Renee Bates online auction as approved in Commissioners Court on February twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. Good morning.
Morning. Okay, on March the twenty-seventh, they had this sale and it ended, the Ferguson Roller was five hundred dollars, the Ford truck was two hundred and sixty dollars, equipment trailer nine hundred, so that is a total of one thousand six hundred and nine dollars, and nine thirty-seven, seven point five percent commission. It made, we made one thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you, Jackie, this is an information-only item. Item number twenty-eight, Jackie Ellis, discussion and action regarding removal of fixed asset, a two thousand and two Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number ending in four five six six, which was purchased by Coons ISD through the county cops grant back in May of two thousand and two. This vehicle was added to inventory by mistake, so we're trying to remove it from inventory.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Feld and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Any other?
Would you stand adjourned?
Mr. Kirkendall?
Judge, I'm very good for him.
Good.
I'm very good. On the carryover, I'm ready, but, uh, I mean, I've had my ducks on the road too.